He could just take my sons.
As unconvened, the regular session of the Oregon City Commission for Wednesday, August 7th. And the roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
Commissioner Mum.
Here.
Commissioner Polly.
Here.
Mayor Neely.
Here, thank you, and would you please join me in place?
I am Pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some special presentations this time. One is not listed, and so we'll have three coming up before we have our citizen comments. The first, from the Oregon Civic Improvement Trust annual report with Michelle Bendville leading the way.
Good evening.
I might just mention that this is a trust that we make grants out of, and the funds come from our tax that we have on the hotels, I think we've got one, and hotels and the, which we don't have, I don't think, but also the trailer.
RV park, yeah.
RV park down there at Clackamas, no, at the Clackamas Park, excuse me. And for that, it's all yours.
Good evening. I'm here to report out for the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust. For the, there's an administrative policy that you would like to hear from boards and committees each year.
Yes.
And even though each of you sit on this committee, I'm here to report out so the general public of Oregon City can hear about it. As Mayor Neely alluded, it is based on the hotel motel tax that is collected, and projects are funded for tourism projects within the city limits. The application period usually opens up in January, excuse me, the applications become available online the end of January. The group meets the end of March 1st of April, the trust's committee members meet, and award grants at that time. The projects typically go for a fiscal year and provide funding for tourism projects within the city. This year, this past grant cycle, the trust group reported, or awarded $86,140, or $140 for eight projects around the city and throughout the year. Not only do you five elected sit on the committee, but there are also four other at-large members, citizens of the city, that sit on the committee as well. So, we've had some great projects come through, we've had some recruit projects with the Antique Fair is always a big one for us. This year, we had the OCHS band and flag team come forward for their Pete's Cruise-In. There's also a project out at Clackamas Community College for the Peace Corps that's, should be, well, maybe up and running, I haven't heard a lot from them lately. So, any questions you might have on that?
When you pay out, when does that occur? When does the grant money go to the?
It is a reimbursement program.
Okay.
So, for instance, if a project is awarded $6,000, I do not provide the $6,000 upfront. It is something that the group will have to reimburse for. However, they are awarded about 50, they can request 50% of it, so they have some startup funds. Once they receive that $3,000 or 50%, then I, and they provide receipts back to me, I will release more funds, but we never release funds upfront.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And then, if I can also add one little thing, which is also a tourism piece, the Clackamas Tourism is, we're going to be meeting, the Oregon City Tourism Council is an ad hoc committee. We are going to be meeting September 9th at the Pioneer Center at 4:30. That project, those funds, we receive funds from the county of $20,000 each year. And again, those are funds for tourism projects. So, if anybody has questions about that, and Rocky also sits on that group, those funds will be out there, and everything will be online and available.
And those, but those are sort of transfers that as we do the administration, but the council itself doesn't have a specific board to deal with that?
No. The Tourism Council Group awards the projects on that, we are just the fiscal agent. And they typically get those done throughout the year as well, it's a fiscal year project.
And how we've, we've handled it a little bit differently in the past, in that it's an open committee, basically, for any tourism-based organization in the city, so it's, the membership to that group is open, and we all, in the past, have pretty much come into a consensus on what the money's going to be spent on, and so it's not, it's not set up kind of, it's not set up in the way we do these grants, where we rate them or whatever, we sit in those meetings and tell we all 100% agree on where the money's going to go for various tourism projects, and sometimes it's projects, it seems that most of the time, we try to make them projects that benefit the whole of the city, meaning more than one of those individual organizations, so in the past, it's been like, you know, to help with the trolleys, or to help with security on the promenade in ways that we know that'll benefit all of the organizations that are part of it. So, it's been, it's been a good, good project, and we have a TAP plan, so that any of the tourism action plans, so each community that's involved in this program with the county has a plan that is updated every year, that basically says, these are the types of things, and I think this commission has seen that, I've brought it to the commission before, says things like, you know, we want to work on things on the waterfront, we want to work on things with certain elements, like the end of the Oregon Trail area, and so it's kind of a general guide to how we want to see money spent in Oregon City, and then that group kind of solidifies what is good for that particular year to spend the money on.
Yeah, and both grant programs are based on heads and beds, it's the tourism theme. One pot of money is city funds, the other pot of money from the county is also the transient room tax that they collect, so it is all based on tourism.
And that meeting is September 9th at what time?
4:30 at the Pioneer Center, and I'll be sending out information.
I will be at that meeting.
Okay.
We have frequent meetings, and I've missed a couple of the tourism meetings that we've had recently because of other meetings, but one of the good things that has happened, that Alice Norris has been involved, she has knowledge of how the tourism group, and she's been part of the tourism group even prior to being mayor, but she's kind of helped a lot in the instances where I can't be at meetings, and so that's, she's been a great help with that.
Yes, good. All right, thank you.
So then, on to Metro Enhancement. So, that is a second grant program that the city has. It is based on tipping fees that we've received from the transfer station down on Washington Street. And again, it is a grant committee that meets once a year. The applications, like I say, are available by January 31st. That meeting typically is the end of May, and those projects, again, are good and funded for a fiscal year. This past grant cycle, we granted and awarded $66,580 for projects around town. These projects are typically enhancement-type projects, it could be a neighborhood, something in the parks, it could be something, street tree, we've done flower baskets, it could be downtown, but it is typically a nonprofit organization that comes forth and does these Any questions on that?
And it's funding done the same way, it's reimbursed?
It's a reimbursable program as well.
And you don't give out funds unless there's a receipt?
Correct.
Again, we have the city commissioners on that, and we have ones we appoint, but I wanted to make a specific note. Carlotta Colette is our representative, our region's representative to the Metro Regional Government's Commission, and Counselor.
Counselor.
And she's here today, and I wanted to make a big point. When I came, I came onto the commission some 16 years ago, and we've never had the, our representative come before a commission, and it's like we've had Carlotta, she comes and talks about what they've done, I think essentially on a quarterly basis, and I think she does this to every city in her jurisdiction. She also has an automatic seat on the Metro Enhancement Committee, the one that we're talking, the grants we're talking about now, and she, to my recollection, I think she's attended every one of those as a voting member. We're really, I think we're, I won't say blessed, because it's the electors' fault, but thanks to, thanks to wise electors, they've actually elected somebody who represents our district very, very well, Carlotta, and every time I have the opportunity to thank you in these public forums, I do so. Because you'll hear a lot of cities complaining about metro regional government, we're not always satisfied with the decisions that come out of the metro regional government either, but we do know that our voice is heard through Carlotta, and we're really appreciative of the work you do. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
And she's going to come up, she does have a few words to say as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
But Carlotta, I've just used up most of your time.
Should I just hand off the T-shirt?
Thank you, and thank you for your kind words, it really is wonderful to hear, as you know, we don't, we don't get a lot of praise at the regional government level, so when we do, it's like, huh, I almost get faint. But I do want to thank you all for hosting the South Transfer Station, and as you know, this is our 30th anniversary. In the years that we've had the Enhancement Program, we've been able to award close to $4 million to Oregon City community projects, enhancement projects, and as I said to a couple of you early tonight, I'm in Oregon City almost as much as I'm in Milwaukee, and I live in Milwaukee, and every time I come here, I feel like it's looking better and better. People take a lot of pride in this community, there's a lot happening, it's really looking good. But I wanted to thank you for your support and for your work on the Enhancement Grant Program, so I have T-shirts for each of you, and I know when I mentioned this earlier, I was hoping they'd say something cool, like, taking trash for 30 years. It's way more subtle than that. This little thing here that I barely read, and I'm like next to it and can hardly read it, but it's 30 years of service to the community, and we're very proud to be here, we think that we, we know we perform a great service, because more than 70% of the small haulers in the region use this facility. The small businesses, the homeowners who deliver their yard debris, the stuff they clean out of their garage, it comes here. So, this is a really important facility for small businesses and homeowners and residents in our region, and we're all very appreciative, and I know a T-shirt is hardly enough to thank you. But even just in, I think in the last 10 years, we've been able to turn 1.4 million back to the community in grants. So, we want to keep that partnership going, we hope at some point, we can increase the tipping fee and be able to turn more back to the community, that's something we've talked with you about, so let's keep working on that, and with that, let me give you your T-shirts. And I have to say, Commissioner Mum, yours says Commissioner Um.
Oh. Added PM.
Sometimes after she speaks, I sometimes say that.
They've been listening to the mayor a little bit too much.
I love it.
And you don't get magic earrings.
Oh.
Oh darn.
That is horrible.
I was.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good, I'm going to make a comment, because I think generally, a lot of people don't know it, I think people generally know that things that come out of Metro's transfer station are transferred over to Gilliam County, that's where the major facility is, I've had a chance to tour it, the, anything that goes in there is in fact covered within a 24-hour period, it's a very efficient landfill program. They have a methane generator now, I think it's something like 25 megawatts, but operating, they've gotten to the point in terms of methane production, that they can actually use it for energy. But I don't think what's generally realized is, I think something like a quarter of the employed population are directly connected to that landfill project in Gilliam. It is a major employment entity, includes truck drivers and so forth. I think Metro established it, but now many, many other areas in the region use that facility. I don't think we even supply majority of the material now.
Right, I think Seattle, also in California, actually, we established it, but they also use it. It's a west coast facility.
But I think the fact that we've contributed to the economy of one of our really economically strapped counties, I think is significant, and I don't know if you want to comment further on that or not.
I really do, because I think when you look at employment maps of the state, before this facility, Gilliam County's unemployment was among the highest counties, and it's now, I think, the lowest county. So, and truly, a significant portion of the citizens work at the, both at the landfill, they've now added wind farms at the landfill, as well as wind farms around the community, so they're generating both income and energy there. But it's, I mean, when we go up there, we're treated like royalty. I mean, anyone from our region, and Mayor Neely can speak to that, they are so appreciative, because this is the economic engine, and it's in some ways sad that our trash is their economy, but thank goodness, something is providing jobs up there, and it's been a great partnership, so I'm glad you could make the trip.
First came to realize that is when I went to a Metro meeting where the then Metro Chair was being sworn in, and they brought in a judge from Gilliam County to actually do the swearing-in, and that's when I began to realize just how important they are to us, but how important we are to them.
It's a really important partnership for all of us, so thanks for mentioning that.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to have a special presentation, it's not, it's not on our agenda.
Mayor Neely, can I add one more thing, I'm sorry.
Are you sorry?
Well, you, as part of your packets, got information on all past grants funded for both OCCIT and Metro Enhancement, and I wanted to let the public know as well, that that's available online and linked to this agenda, if there's questions, and they can view those projects as well over the years.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I believe we have representatives from Holcomb PTA, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, would you want to come over and tell a story? Please introduce yourself by name only, and whether you live in Oregon City or not, you don't have to say anything more than that, except what you're here for.
I'm Erin Fernald, and I am from Oregon City.
And I'm Tima Carlson, from Oregon City as well, and President of Holcomb PTA. And I'm the Vice President.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. And we also have Vicki Squires back there, who's Secretary for the PTA. So, Holcomb Elementary has been working on fundraising for a old playground for several years now, and our first screen shows some of our sponsors, we have our PTA, of course, Kaufman Excavation, Buell Recreation, BCI Burke, and Safeway. So, here's a photo of our old playground, built probably in the 80s, I would guess.
You might want to be careful, I was the president of that PTA.
Well, the kids sure enjoyed it, it was put to good use.
It was well-loved.
Very, very much well-loved, and needed a replacement. So, the last three years, I believe, we've been fundraising, using different types of fundraisers, jog-a-thons, penny drives, wreath, cookie, popcorn sales, scrip, and auctions, and finally, we raised over $37,000, which was enough to purchase a new playground. So, we had a committee that voted, as well as with the school family population, on what they wanted in a playground structure, and we came up with the following, that is provided by Burke, BCI Burke, and Buell Construction, Buell Recreation. So, I don't know if you saw, but we had steps, so step three is our community involvement. We contacted local contractors and companies to coordinate volunteers. Again, Buell Recreation and BCI Burke donated over $7,000 in a grant that was able for us to purchase.
And Buell Recreation added in free shipping for the product, which was another additional $3,000 to $4,000.
And then, we contacted Kaufman Excavation, located in Oregon City, that has donated over $8,000 worth of value of demolition of the existing structure, recycling the structure, and constructing the post holes, and pouring the concrete, after our build day on August 16th. Safeway also donated over $3,000 worth in food and volunteers, they've provided 16 volunteers for build day, and are providing food for our grand opening event on August 28th. And we also have volunteers from our school body, local churches, and local clubs and organizations on build day and the grand opening. So, step four is our build day. Again, August 16th is in a week and a half. And so, yeah, we've, we needed 20 volunteers per Buell's recommendations, and we were able to.
25.
Get 25. So, we'll have them put to other uses, doing maintenance around the school and whatnot, so. We also have a link to our program called Volunteer Spot, where you can sign up for build day and our grand opening day. And the grand opening day is August 28th, again, we're coordinating it with our open house, where students can bring their school supplies and meet their teachers, and then following, we'll be having a ribbon cutting, where our mayor will be involved in that, and we're also trying to get the superintendent involved as well, and some local media, and we'll be providing live music from a local Oregon City band, food, free cake, so, yeah, it's going to be quite a festivity. We're also hoping to have a move that bus, where the kids can.
If we can get approval, we can do so.
That's our goal. And that's it. Any questions?
Do you have a time set up for build day? It is going to be all day, we're starting at 8:00 AM, so it may get done sooner, since we have extra volunteers, it may get done quick, but we are kind of planning a whole day worth of build day.
Well, you were very resourceful with the money that you had, you really made it stretch, and you're going to have a beautiful play structure for years more of entertainment and fun.
Very excited. And we are excited, the fact that we do have some budget money left over to do some other enhancements, hopefully to the playground as we continue, but we were very conservative when we bought the structure, to not, to leave enough funds for installation, and now that Kaufman and Safeway have joined with us, we're going to have a lot less needed for that, so we should have some extra left over for the future, so it's good.
Great.
That's great, I had mentioned on Correspondence that we have this Metro Enhancement Committee that gives out grants, but they got that money together without any help from us at all. And I know that fundraising is not easy, I think most people have problems asking for entities and organizations to give money, but the point is, there are organizations that do like to support the communities, that they, you know, that they have businesses and so forth, and we're able to tap into some of that, and it's not, you know, it takes a little bit of courage to go out there and knock on somebody's door and ask for that kind of support, you've obviously been successful.
We have seen such a great community involvement with this project from the beginning, and our auction was probably the biggest one, I mean, we had so many auction items, it was unbelievable, and it really just pushed us over that edge, and then to do build day and have, you know, groups, the Lions Club, the local churches, and wanting to, them all, wanting to be involved in the project is just great. I mean, we want our parents to be involved, but to see the community involved is huge. So, we are really hoping that our celebration will be not just our school, our playground, but a celebration of the community, how they came together to accomplish this.
I'm going to ask a question, is that a fenced-off area, or can children in the community use it on Saturdays and Sundays?
It is basically a public park during the week, so, or any time that school's not in session.
Well, that's the kind of experience that you have developed, that we just love to have on our Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust Board, and our Metro Enhancement Board, and periodically, those positions come up when we take applications, and if you happen to see them come through, and you want to be involved in the city itself, and actually looking at grant proposals and so forth, I'd really welcome you making applications when those come forward.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, it's time of the program, we take citizen comments for things that are not on our regular agenda. Our agenda is amazingly short.
Yes, I know.
That hasn't been the case lately, and right at the moment, am I correct, I don't see anybody signed up?
That's correct.
With that, last chance, going, gone, we'll go into our adoption of the agenda, is there anything that anybody wants to be polled from the agenda?
On the consent agenda, I'd like 7A polled.
7A, two restrictive covenant non-monster agreements, I think it's a good idea, because it's been a long time since we've heard what those are, and so I think there'd be a real benefit for having those presented to us. Anything else? We'll go then into general business, I'll ask for a brief presentation on the ordinance itself, it's a second reading for ordinance 13-1009, amending our Title 17 zoning, and who wishes to speak to that, I presume it's Tony Conical.
We'll take that, evening, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you, this is second reading of proposed ordinance number 13-1009, approving the zone change from R10 Single Family to R6, and approving a 10-lot subdivision for a property located at 14270 Canyon Ridge Drive. The previous approval of the land use decision in ordinance included conditions of approval and approving the staff report, so we are requesting that you do approve the second reading of the ordinance.
That, do I hear a motion for second reading and final adoption?
Move for second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 13-1009.
Moved by Betty Mum, and I see a second by Commissioner Roth, and.
Let me read.
Got to read it.
Do you want me to read it, or you want to read?
Watch me close, yes.
Ordinance number 13-1009, an ordinance amending Title 17, zoning chapter 1706030 of the official zoning map of the City of Oregon City Municipal Code by changing the properties identified as Clackamas County Map 32E16BB, Tax Lot 300, from R10 Single Family Dwelling District to R6 Single Family Dwelling District, and approving a 10-lot subdivision.
May I have the vote, please? It's unanimous pass. Mr. Conical, since we have a short agenda, you might want to take a little time to talk about the different types of land use, the ones that ultimately come to the commission, those that are acted upon by the Planning Commission, and some of them that come to both, those that is basically staff approval, and I point out in any of these, that they are appealable to the city commission, but we talk about those kinds of types of land use decisions we have, and what the processes are, and we have a little bit of time, and I think it's been a while since we've heard.
All right, so essentially, you have four land use types, a type 1, a type 2, a type 3, a type 4, and then you also have what are called legislative actions, so I'll talk about the land use actions that staff and Planning Commission and City Commission deal with primarily. So, essentially, you have four land use types, a type one, a type two, a type three, a type four. And then, you also have what are called legislative actions. So, I'll talk about the land use actions that staff and planning commission and city commission deal with primarily. Type one would be something where there is very limited discretion, something like a lot line adjustment or an extension. The answers are yes or no. It's a type one decision. You don't have your public noticing requirements that you have for other types of land use decisions. Then you get into a type two decision, which are a lot of the ones that staff make. Those are subdivisions, minor partitions, site plan and design review. A lot of your land use decisions there have very limited amount of discretion utilized. So, the approval criteria for, would be something that's, that can be usually measured or is easily identifiable. You know, the front transparency on a building needs to be 60%. It's a math equation. You can do it. There's not a lot of discretion involved in that. So, that's why those are type two decisions. That does include posting the property, mailing notice to the neighborhood association, everybody within 300 feet. It's only written comments that are received for those that are type two staff level decisions. And in order to appeal the decision, you must have submitted comments. The next type is a type three, and those involve a little bit more discretion and those go in front of our planning commission. So, that would be something similar to a conditional use or a variance. And so, it's, it has some discretion in there. And that meaning, you know, one of the approval criteria would be, you know, is the proposed use compatible with the surrounding area? Very, you know, subjective. So, it goes from a planning committee or a staff level decision up to the planning commission. They make the decision. Very similar in terms of public noticing. The property's posted, mailed to the neighborhood association, everybody within 300 feet. In addition to that, it is advertised in the newspaper. And then, there's a public hearing in front of the planning commission. Once again, you need to either participate either in writing or at the hearing in order to have standing to appeal to the city commission. And the fourth type is a type four. That would be a comprehensive plan amendment, a zone change, something that requires amending an ordinance that would go through. A planning commission makes a recommendation. City commission makes the final decision. And then, we have what are called legislative actions. That would be something similar to what we just did with the transportation system plan or when we adopted our comprehensive plan or when we adopt code changes. So, they're, the legislative action tends to be citywide. It affects a whole zone. So, example, we changed the mixed use downtown zone. It's not specific to one property, which is why we have a type four, like a land use or a zone change request for a certain property would be a type four land use decision. But if we were changing 50 properties, we would probably run that as a legislative action because it has impacts over a wide area of property rather than just a single property. So, rather quickly, those are the four main types of land use actions and the legislative action that we have.
Now, a type one, given that there's no public notice, is that still appealable?
It is appealable to the Court of Appeals. It is not appealable through our normal land use decisions. And then, once again, any decision of the city commission is then appealable to the land use board of appeals, which is then appealable to the court of appeals, which then could go to the Supreme Court. So, there is a process for that public involvement and that appeal process built in.
And the other types, though, could be appealed to the city commission.
The type two, the type three, the staff level and the planning commission are appealable to the city commission, correct?
Okay. Well, thank you for the refresh with that. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
The second piece of business is a contract agreement with construction of the illuminate Oregon City Municipal Elevator Renovation Project, an exciting project. And I believe we have John Lewis, our Public Works Director, is going to talk about that one.
Thank you, Mayor Neely and Commissioners. I'll go through this relatively quickly. Yes, you mentioned this is contract agreement for the illumination of Oregon City project. It's basically the exterior painting, lighting and some signage. So, this isn't the-
Artwork.
This isn't the artwork. This is the preparation of the canvas, if you will. So, just, we considered putting this on your consent agenda, but there's a difference between the estimated project and the actual bids. So, we thought maybe we'd bring it to your attention and just go over a few of the thoughts that we've got about this. We understand this is a pretty important project to our city. We heard that at the presentation and the, we saw the excitement in the room. We still think this is, even though the bid prices were higher than what we estimated, we think it's an important project and project we want to move forward with relatively quickly. Couple of considerations that we have were schedule and budget, obviously, and scope of work. So, Martin Montalo, who's in the room, has been working diligently about putting this part of the project together. The art piece that the artist is bringing up is a separate piece. So, just want to be clear about that. This is really about preparing the barrel, preparing the elevator for the art and making some significant improvements to the signage at the same time. So, when we started thinking about the scope of work, first of all, this is, this elevator hasn't been painted since 1991 and it's showing signs of it. I know, I know you all love the color.
Absolutely.
The current color or the previous color?
Both.
Both, right?
I think I like the blue better than the pink.
So, I think, I think we reached some consensus on color and the look. The artist showed us some, or actually, it wasn't the artist. It was our Dow architects who put a lot of energy into researching the history of the elevator and kind of the uniqueness of that. And so, so it needs to be, it needs some love and care, definitely. So, we also, when we thought about this decision, should we take it back out for bids? We looked at, the bids were relatively close. There, there's about $5,000 between the high and the low bids. So, we think the contractor has hit in the right mark. We may have some things to consider with regard to scope, but with regard to schedule, we're really tight. We need to get this, this work done this, this season.
Yes.
And we need to get it done in time so that we can do the artwork, which the grant has got some time constraints as well. So, we feel like we've got to get moving on this. So, another reason not to prolong the bidding process any further. The scope of work, we've talked, we met with the contractor. Can't really negotiate with the contractor for a different price yet until we have a contract. So, we're thinking we issue the contract, look for savings there. There are some opportunities for that. We talked to the contractor about that. There's some things that may be, one of the big, big items is just having a rail monitor there that we pay Union Pacific pretty high rates, over $1,000 a day. I think it's $1,300 a day or something like that. Remember?
$1,700 a day.
Oh, my gosh.
$1,750 a day. So, you know, work on options for how we might accelerate that. We're wanting to work with UP to do the best we can to give the contractor a good window for his painting. And that's, that's the main piece. There's some electrical work up on top of the tunnel as well. So, just trying to work with him on that. But he's got a pretty big, the contractor's required to pay for that. So, he's got a big number in there for that, just to say, you know, make sure he's secured with what he's got to do. So, we think most of this, we have about $121,000 planned for this project and we're looking at our street fund and to the degree we can, our general fund for more funding to be able to, to cover the, cover the full $195,000. So, we've got to come up with $74,000. We think we can do that. We know for certain that we've got some transfers planned from our street fund into our fleet reserve account. And we're thinking maybe we'll put off some of those kind of purchases in favor of this elevator. So, that's what our plan is and we'd like, I guess we're asking you for, to authorize the city manager to execute the contract agreement in the amount $195,000 with Columbia Cascade Construction to provide construction services to complete the illuminate Oregon City Municipal Elevator Renovation Project.
I don't know if the proposed contractor is here? Does he want to speak to it at all?
I don't believe he's here, no.
Oh, he's not here? Okay. Any comments?
Just a question, is there going to be some resurfacing or is it just strictly painting?
They're, they're going to prep the surface and prime the surface and it'll be, you know, it'll look like a new structure. Not quite like what they did with the bridge, but it'll be sanding and scraping and those kind of things.
And you might want to mention, I thought people might question why street funds would be used for the elevator, which I think is a pretty amazing piece of our history of Oregon City. It's considered a street. It always has been considered a street, connecting Seventh Street from the lower level to the upper level. And so, it's always been in that budget.
Yeah, a vertical street. You're right. Thank you for the clarification.
I don't know if I'm the only one on commission that remembers the old street.
I think you probably-
I do remember the street.
I heard about it from my grandma.
Yes. It was a very terrifying experience, as I recall. So, anyway, with that, do I, do I hear a motion?
You have a speaker.
Oh, excuse me.
I just have a quick question. So, was the, was there a bid made and then that was increased because of certain conditions with the elevator? Or was there just a ballpark taken, estimated how much a budget would be and then it just was over that?
No, there was an estimate and then we got three bids. So, the estimate is what was low. I would say that this was, with regard to the painting, although it's been 1991, our painting estimate was, was right on. We're seeing just with some of the lettering and some of the lighting components, some custom metalwork. And then, the electrical has got some challenges associated with it, too. And I think those were just hard to estimate and hard to see. So, so, yeah, we, I think, I think the other part of it was we knew what we had to spend. So, sometimes you find your estimates kind of hitting close to your budget number in hopes that you'll be there. Because usually, you share your estimate or a range with the contractors. So, we like to encourage them to bid low.
Exactly.
Didn't work in this case.
Thank you.
Any other questions? With that, yes.
I know we've talked before about an emergency buzzer or something in the elevator. Is this time to do it when you're doing electrical?
Well, I'm not sure we're going to be inside the elevator so much as outside the elevator with our electrical work. The other little piece to pull together the funding that we need for this, we've looked to our elevator budget, which we had increased significantly to do a couple of little things like that. And we're deciding, we're going to have to decide to not do those kind of things in favor of funding this exterior improvement.
Okay.
Just a more general question. When we, when we say we do take funds out of the fleet fund, those are funds that are tend to be paid back. Is that not correct?
We'll have to see about that. There's likely that we'll have to do a budget amendment. Whether we make the fleet fund whole or not, that's a conscious decision by the department as to how much we put in reserve fund. And we'll, you know, I need to work with Wyatt on that, work with the street, with Martin and the street department to figure out, you know, is that something that we can put off or, or do we, should we make that whole? And find, find a source. But there's not a lot of sources out there for additional funding unless we get, you know, more grant funding.
Any other questions? And with that, the motion which has come forward, I think, somebody's trying to put it forward. There it comes. It comes, Mr. Roth made the motion.
Second.
Okay.
And the vote, please.
Can you speak the motion to the record?
I move that we approve item number 13-477, contract agreement for the construction of illuminate Oregon City Municipal Elevator Renovation Project.
Second.
With that, the vote, please. And a unanimous vote on that. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and take, we pulled off the consent agenda, seven A, 13006. We'll go ahead and receive that now. And this, this is again from John Lewis, our Public Works Director.
Yes, I'll go ahead and go through this. So, this is, this is what we call a restrictive covenant for non-remonstrance agreement for two subdivisions. We bring this to you for every subdivision. It's the same language that goes into each subdivision that we do. Restrictive covenant for non-remonstrance agreement essentially allows, we do it as a part of the land use process. So, we do it when we have a property that's in for approval of some kind of land use decision. And it's meant to prevent the property owners within that development or whoever's, you know, whichever parcel is, is signing this agreement. It waives their right to remonstrate from a local improvement district. And that local improvement districts can be established for a variety of reasons. But the reasons that are specific to this is for sanitary sewer improvements, stormwater improvements, water improvements, street improvements. And so, often, communities form local improvement districts. We haven't done one in a long time, but they do often, you know, if you've got a major area that's got sewer failure or something or, you know, it could be a, it could be a natural disaster or something, something like that. Or it could be, you know, septic system failures in a part of the city that doesn't have it. If we have, Tony and I were talking about this. I can't remember if it's 66% or 51%. I don't remember what the number is, but if we have, we can form a local improvement district if we have that percentage of people that have either, that either have these non-remonstrance agreements or agree to sign those. So, it's a way to ensure that the city, should something like that come up, be able to develop a project, form a local improvement district, which is really a mechanism for how we would get, how we would fund that project. And it, so it, this allows us to do that and at least have these properties kind of pre-signed up for that kind of a program.
And it lets the developer develop current, right now?
The developer's still going to be required to provide all, all those kinds of services. This isn't necessarily about helping the developer fund those things. They're going to be required to do all the requirements that we have under our development code. This is like several years down the road, if we needed a, you know, water distribution system because ours was, you know, shot and we decided the right way to fund that was by forming a local improvement district, we would have then these already in place for at least those developments that have occurred over the last few years. Because we've been doing this for, well, I don't know how long we've been doing this, a long time.
For years, but we haven't really had that many before us recently. So, I thought it would be a good reminder.
They're, they're listed in each of the plaques, I believe. So, you know, it's, it's standard language. I don't know if other cities do it, but it's been a standard for Oregon City for a long time.
Yeah, for years. I just wanted to have a quick reminder and-
Was that helpful enough? You think people understand that?
In other words, it's a kind of a tax they agree to pay.
It's, ooh.
It protects the city.
No, it's not, it's, it's basically an agreement that if an LID forms, that they won't vote against it. They still have the ability to actually participate in, you know, how you spread that, you know? If you've got a project and the cost is $100,000 and you've got 100 people participating, then, you know, there's lots of ways to divvy that up, but some might say, everybody should pay $1,000. Others might say, well, no, this property owner's got three connections. He should pay three times as much as the other, you know? So, there's still that opportunity for these property owners to participate in, in kind of the formulation of how the, how that project would be funded. But, and it might be that they participate in the part that says, well, the city ought to participate in a big way, too, and, you know, fund 50% of the project or something. So, that, that's still out there. There's still hearings that go along. There's still the local improvement district process that we will have to go through, which requires an engineer's report, requires public hearings. So, it's, it's, it just eliminates their right to vote no against it.
The reason why, excuse me. The reason why we do this is because subdivisions take a big drain on our public utilities. And oftentimes, we don't know exactly how well the utility's going to work over time. And if we didn't do this, we might ask developers to study these systems in greater detail and potentially fix them at the outset of getting an approval. And this way, we're able to agree to sort of, we'll fix it later, but you agree that you're going to help us fix it to some extent in the future. And it is a covenant that is recorded against the land, just like a CCNR homeowners association covenant. And that's why it's called a restrictive covenant. So, it's recorded against the land. So, all subsequent purchasers, when they're thinking about buying a lot in these subdivisions, see the covenant. They know that they're agreeing that they will not object to the creation of a local improvement district if it were to be created. And that's, that's what it is. And it is, I can't think of a jurisdiction that doesn't use them in the metro area, certainly.
Thank you. That was good.
I remember one that came before us is when the high school was going on and wanted to make improvements on Caulfield. Students support that and the residents wouldn't support it. I don't know if there've been subsequent ones that we've.
Ungin Oak, yeah. The sidewalk project.
Yeah, Ungin Oak, right. Yeah. I don't know if we'd had any sense on that one, that one didn't go.
That was the last one, I recall.
I guess, do we have any current ones that are operational or that you know?
Current local improvement districts? No, I think they've all, well, there might be something in Park Place for Sewer that there's still a couple of payments that are outstanding, but for the most part, we haven't done one for probably twenty years.
Okay. Well, thank you. No, I see no other requests for discussion. I hear a vote.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I know, what do you want?
Do you have to approve this one first?
This one, please.
All right. Move to approve thirteen dash zero zero four.
Six.
Six. Oh, six. Six, thank you. Carrie, do you want to read it or do I have to read the whole thing?
It doesn't have to be read, does it?
Doesn't have to be read.
It's not an ordinance.
Okay. So, then I can.
It's been moved by Commissioner Mum and has been seconded by Commissioner Polly. The vote, please. That's unanimous as well. A motion for the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Vote, please. Again, unanimous. With that, we go into communications and our city manager pro tem.
Almost made it. So, I just have a couple of updates, actually, from some of the other staff, but just a more of a public service announcement. McLaughlin Boulevard, Highway ninety-nine E will be closed with detours on, beginning at ten PM on Friday, August sixteenth to five AM, Monday, August nineteenth, for the construction of the Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail. Will require the closure of ninety-nine E between southeast Washington Street and southeast River Road from ten PM, Friday, August sixteenth to five AM, Monday, August nineteenth. Information is available at trymet.org about that and the alternate public transportation and detour routes are available.
Washington Street here in Oregon City?
No.
I hope not.
Up in, up in Milwaukee.
Yeah, that's okay.
Essentially, yeah, the detour route is ninety-nine E, two oh five to two twenty-four, back to ninety-nine E to avoid that. If you are going to continue north and south, local access will be provided, but through traffic will not over the weekend. Up in Milwaukee. With that, I'll turn it over to John Lewis as an update.
Right, so, this update's about the mall, avenue phase three grant project and kind of an update on how the August fourth, or August first meeting went with the C four Metro Subcommittee. And I'd like to do this without sounding like a whiner, but I think I'm going to sound like a whiner.
Permission to whine.
Can I whine a little?
We'll whine along with you.
Well, we, we actually met with Metro Counselor Carlotta Colette today about a different topic, but she was kind enough to give us about five minutes of her time to kind of share it. So, she offered some good words of wisdom, but we're still, we're still feeling like, you know, things didn't quite go right there. The, the community, first of all, I'd just like to acknowledge what a tremendous community we really have. It was, the, the good thing that I found about this is, you know, all through the grant process, and maybe this is part of our, was part of our problem, but through that, staff was kind of gearing up to do that. We mentioned it at several public meetings, but, you know, we didn't see the public outcry until August first, when many people showed up in their red shirts as asked in the chamber and other community members. William was champion behind this, got a lot of community members to that meeting. And there was much more red in the audience than any other colors. Even, even some from the other projects wore red, not realizing they had.
That's fine.
That was, that was very interesting. By far, I think Oregon City provided the best project that most appropriately hit the grant criteria that Metro was looking for. The other projects were local projects and good, good projects, don't get me wrong. And then we heard a fair amount from the other mayors and counselors that were on the C four Metro Committee about, you know, the unfortunateness of having so little funding and so many projects. And we get that. But we focused, we, we identified a project that we thought best met the criteria and we spent a fair amount of effort in getting that package together, selling that. We didn't spend one million dollars, like was posted in the newspaper, though, to get ready for this grant application. We spent probably more like ten thousand dollars to try and get our grant application together. So, I think that's just a small typo there, but I want to make sure.
A big typo.
We didn't, we didn't spend a billion dollars to get, to get to this decision.
I get concerned with our management, the team feels a small typo, something between ten thousand dollars and one million dollars, man.
Yeah, you're, you're right. So, I think we, well, maybe we're, this is our opinion, I guess, but we feel like the C four decision was the wrong decision, was definitely kind of inconsistent with what their, the federal and the metro goals and, and objectives are. The, the other hard part of that meeting was that Jim Band provided a lot of information on safety, none of the other applicants provided that, and it's one of the main criteria for that grant. They just didn't seem to listen to that. I think that, I believe the decision had kind of been made beforehand and, and maybe that's the way politics goes. I, I'm learning, I'm learning here. But the motion approved by the C four Subcommittee recommended funding for a project that you will be interested in. The Trolley Trail Historic Bridge, which is the bridge that crosses Clackamas Drive between, and it sits between our existing pedestrian bridge and Highway ninety-nine E bridge on the Clackamas River. So, that's a Union Pacific owned facility. And according to the applicant, they've got funding for a project that would improve that. This, this allocation was two hundred and one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars for a study that would further figure out all the details about who would own it, who would pay for it, how would it, you know, how would all that play out? But, so anyway, that, that's one project that was approved. The other one was Happy Valley Project, which is southeast one hundred and twenty-ninth Avenue, where they're proposing bike lanes and sidewalk improvements for two million seven hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. So, that project got full funding. The county's project, which is Jennings Avenue, they allocated the remainder, which is one million six hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars for sidewalks and bike lanes along Jennings Avenue. All, you know, they're, they're, they're good projects, they're needed projects, it's just they don't meet the criteria. And we felt like the criteria was the decision-making piece. I think the C four felt like that was guidance documentation for them. So, I really think the differences were regional funds should be used for regional projects. I think that's, Metro agrees with that. Commissioner Carlotta kind of indicated that it used to be that Metro made those decisions as opposed to handing it down to the counties. And their, their intent was for regional facilities as opposed to local, local streets. So, that's one piece. The other thing we heard was Malala already has sidewalks. And while that's true, we think there's plenty of gaps and deficiencies with those existing sidewalks, but seemed like the Subcommittee had trouble getting over that little hurdle. Definitely a question about federal criteria versus the C four criteria and what they were using to kind of come to a conclusion. They also, one of the criteria that they seemed to think was important, and I guess I, I agree with this, but it would have been nice to know this was kind of, their desire to spread that funding around a little bit more and, you know, allocate it to other agencies. There was some information that went out before this meeting about the amount of grant funding that Oregon City's obtained versus the other communities. And it, it was moving information, it said a lot about Oregon City's success. My point was that for about ten years now, we've been doing a lot of work for ODOT. And most of that funding that we've gotten has been for their facilities. So, that kind of frustrated me as well as that, that, those, you know, the basic numbers were shown, and yeah, it's in our community, but it was definitely not our projects and not our local streets. So, big picture wise and kind of one of the things that I, David, David's been on vacation and called me over the weekend, I know he's interested in kind of pursuing this, and we want to make, we would like Metro to know that, you know, we think the process is flawed and if decisions are going to come down this way, maybe they ought to think about sharing that information with applicants so that, you know, they might know that ahead of time. But we also, and I kind of think that, you know, we are a regional center, we got, we got a lot of requests yet to make. And with the Willamette Falls Legacy Project needing, needing some funding and, you know, who knows what's going to happen over on the landfill site. And, you know, we've got this alternate mobility piece that we've got to get through that came through our transportation system plan that may involve improvements to ninety-nine E at, at two oh five. There's just a lot of requests out there and maybe this just wasn't meant to be. And so, well, the next steps are August eighth, there's a deadline that the county set for any additional written comments, so we're still accepting written comments and may make a few of our own that will go to J-PAC and the C four. September fifth, the C four will finalize its, its, its recommendation, because C four makes the recommendation to J-PAC. So, they'll make that final recommendation on September fifth. Doug and Betty, I think it would be good for you to be there at that meeting. September twelfth, let's see, C four Metro Subcommittee Actions, that's when, that's when the C four representatives, so there's one from Lake Oswego and one from the county, they'll actually present their recommendation to J, to, to the joint, the Metro Joint Policy Advisory, I wrote this down, Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation. So, they'll make that, they'll make that recommendation. And then on October tenth, J-PAC will finalize that decision. And then we hear there's going to be a debrief where they'd like to really kind of hear what we think. Maybe not what we think, but we'll be sure and be there for that as well. So, that's, that's my.
I'm going to go out of order here and, and also whine. There were several criteria listed. And Oregon City was tied or greater than every other project with the exception of one criterion, and that was one that covered the, the Trolley Bridge. It's a feasibility study that Gladstone put forward, which we actually support to convert it into a pedestrian bike facility, and currently it's not used for anything. So, Union Pacific Route, but was originally the, the transit line for the trolleys going from Portland to Oregon City. Every single criteria other than that one, we were as good as or better than any other project that was put forward. Our total score was much higher than, than the others. The, and I, and I agree with John, there is something of an equity issue there, but the point is, if you include that as a criterion, you're, you're changing the rules towards the end of the game. And that's an issue I'm sure we go forward through. The, the city would be agreeable to one of two things, except, and I'll tell you what we'd be agreeable, and talked about what the exception is. One is you fund the other two projects and then Oregon City comes in two years. Our request was for essentially all the money. But we had a, we had an over thirty-six percent match. No other jurisdiction had even a third of that, so we had a tremendous match we had as well. And the, so we would essentially require the full allotment. And the suggestion is, well, let these two go forward and then Oregon City comes next time and it, it goes through in two years. Or Oregon City takes its now and in two years' time, the other two get theirs. The difficulty is that's not the way the process goes. Every two years, new projects are put forward. And you cannot, under the current way you do things, you can't, you can't change those rules. You can't say, well, we'll do something in two years' time. It doesn't work. They're new members of C four because they're new elected people, but in addition to that, you accept additional proposals every two years. So, there's no guarantee we'd be on top one year hence, nor is there any guarantee that the other two would be on top. And so, the argument for equity, I think, is something that should be considered for an additional criterion in the future, but not at the end of the game. And so, we intend to pursue this a great, to a great extent, and I'll just simply mention that Commissioner Mum, for emergency circumstances, was not able, she's our representative to C four, she was not able to represent us there, and I was the alternate, so I did. And I have talked to Commissioner Mum, and I'll probably continue on this particular issue, continue the, the representation of Oregon City before any other body. J-PAC, I believe it's the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation. And then also we have then the Metro Council. And there are some transportation, there are some transportation metro things that require the support of both of them. Is that not right? Or is that right?
Well, I mean, requires the both of them, you mean, C four and?
No, J-PAC and the Metro Council, both. It's an advisory committee, I don't know.
I have a feeling that this, I have a feeling J-PAC also makes a recommendation. I mean, the overall funding bill is like ninety-eight million dollars, so I'm sure that goes before the Metro Council.
So, there's probably two, besides trying to make the argument again to C four and hope they change their mind, I think it's highly unlikely. There are, I think there are two steps we go through. One, give, give our counter recommendation to the J-PAC and then to the Metro Council as things go forward. The, the chair of the, the chair of the C four committee, C four, I think it's Clackamas County Coordinating Committee is what C four stands for. I think he took, he took a lesson from Captain Barbosa from, from Pirates of the Caribbean, who, he considered, remember the Pirates Code more as guidelines?
Guidelines.
He, he almost quoted that line, I don't know if he realized.
I've heard about it a couple of times.
Yeah, he regarded those criteria as guidelines. And, and really they aren't. They are, they're things that are really passed down through the federal allocation of money to the regional government. Those, those guidelines, those criteria then are based on those particular recommendations. So.
Yeah, I could have seen that criteria come up as a tiebreaker, or even if we were a little closer, but there was so much difference in the types of projects. I mean.
So, we're, we're going to really pursue this, pursue this hard. As, as staff has stated before, they would not have invested, we, we put it in ten, ten thousand dollar investment, that's, but a lot of staff time goes into developing these things. They are, and, and the fact is Oregon City has produced excellent project recommendations, and that's why we've been able to fund the things that we've been doing. We do a good job, Public Works does a tremendous job on, on these kinds of things, and I don't think we should be penalized. But I do see the equity as perhaps being a criterion in the future, but not applied to the current, current situation. So, we'll be pursuing that. And that, that is one of the components of the city manager's report. Do you have some more? Something else I want to say, yeah, city manager's report?
Could I just ask one question, since we're on city manager's report? Did they say how much money Clackamas County has received from?
From this particular grant, they were, I don't remember, it was over fifteen million and we were a little over eleven million. So, the city's been very successful in this particular, but this, 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 talking about, talking with Commissioner Colette, there was, this was the intent of this fund to be allocated more to cities than county.
Right, right.
But it's not played out that way, you know? But there, I think that was the intent of the regional government to kind of help local, smaller, you know, that's why this was allocated.
Right.
Because there's a lot of other funding. Like I said, it's a ninety-eight million dollar grant, so.
Yes.
Just to, just to say something about those two other projects. One of them is not in a city, it's within the county. That was Jennings Road. And the other one, too, one ninety, one, one twenty-nine, right?
One twenty-nine?
Yeah, one twenty-nine. It isn't Happy Valley, but in the, in the, in the times that county transferred lands to cities, they were now required to bring them up to urban standards. So, I mean, these, that one in particular functions like a rural road. I, I mean, we can see why it needs the improvements. We don't, we don't question that at all. So, those were the two projects. I don't know if Commissioner Mum was asking the question of you, though, doesn't the county get an allocation of its own that is discretionary or not? Doesn't the county get an allocation of its own that is discretionary or not?
Not discretionary, but they, they went after, they got, well, with this one, over $10 million just out of this, this grant program because they got like $9 million for a freight mobility project, I believe.
That was independent of this.
Yeah, because there was nobody else that applied for that.
Right, right.
So, we, so we had a, it's not, the county didn't have money out of this. They did.
That's what I was trying to figure out is the county got money.
County always gets money.
Yeah. But they also have other resources available to them that we maybe don't have as a city, correct?
Well, they got a lot of staff time, staff availability. Yeah. We're really kind of running on a shoestring when we put this together. So, yeah.
You got additional items?
I do.
We're done waiting now.
We've been waiting patiently.
Well, I, I just want to say thank you for all your work on that and your continuing work. I know, I know it's a lot, but pulling for our sidewalks and our sidewalk connections, you know, I'm really big for that. It's important to our community. So.
I think I verge on being snarly, but not quite.
Thank you.
Next, I have an update from Library Director Cole.
Are you, are you, are you going to be testy too or?
No.
Okay.
Relax. I think we have enough testiness at the table. And I feel so bad. I wasn't here to attend that, but I felt so bad hearing about it. Anyway, I just wanted to update you on a couple of library things. First of all, we are planning our first public meeting for input, which will be Thursday, September the 5th, at 6:00 PM here, right in the City Commission. And what we are trying to get at this particular meeting is input from the community on what they would like on the inside of the library. So, what we're starting to work on is the part of the process called the programming, which is like what, what is on the interior, like how you divide the space up and what it's used for. And so, we're going to start the meeting off with interior slides of new exciting libraries out there and get everybody like all jazzed up and thinking about, you know, possibilities and then just start brainstorming. So, this is just, you know, the first meeting and just brainstorming, but just trying to get feedback from, and input from people on that. So, that'll be September 5th here and I'll, I'll put more out about that. You're the first to know. And other things that we're doing as far as development of the library is, of course, we started contracting with the agency, McKenzie Group for the parking study, Pacific Resources Group for a tree assessment, and another group for the, the GO, what's under the ground. So, those three things are kind of in process as well.
What time is that? Public input meeting?
6:00 PM. Because that's the same night as the McLaughlin Association meeting. And so, we decided to have it a little early so maybe they could come here first and skip dinner completely that night. But, you know, but that's just one opportunity. We'll have many. So. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is just an update, a quick update on the LSTA digitization grant. It's about 70% through with the microfilming phase, 20% through of the digitization phase. We've started an informational brochure, a webpage and some public information on it and a little, a little blurb. Press release was in the Oregon City News or Clackamas Review or whatever, just came out the other day. And the assistant to Kurt Trader saw that and sent a very nice note to just, you know, congratulate us on getting that grant and on how good of a project it sounded. So, that was really nice to hear. So, that's in, in progress and should be really, really great when it is up and going. But still a few months away from that. So, just a little quick update on those items.
Great. Thank you.
Last, I have a quick update from Eric Underwood, our Economic Development Manager.
Yeah, I just wanted to get an opportunity to give, get you guys up to speed quickly on some of the things we're doing in economic development. Probably you haven't heard some, something from me for a while. So, a lot of these projects are taking some time. But I'll just kind of go through the list. If you have questions, let me know. One of the bane of my existence is, is working on the Cove and trying to get that DDA put together. We're still working with that and hopefully we'll hear something soon. Our attorney is kind of going through the latest version of the DDA and so we'll hear something soon from him in a week or so, hopefully. And once again, in communications with Donna Hues Schreiber, since they have signed the deals for the Parker piece and the lease, the golf lease. We have not met with them yet, but they're wanting to meet with us soon. I think they're trying to get a new site plan, a preliminary site plan together and some of their proposal together before they come see us. So, I'm hoping to hear from them, if not the end of this week, first part of next week. And we'll schedule a meeting soon to talk more about that and get them going. We are now accepting new applications for the Adaptive Rehab Reuse Program. They've been open for about a week and a half. They'll close on the 16th. This period will. Haven't received any applications to date for this round. Business Toolkit. I know you haven't heard that phrase in a while, but I am still diligently working on that. We have that kind of in three phases. So, we're going to have that in a hard copy, kind of a brochure pamphlet form. We're, I'm working with IT folks to design a webpage around the Business Toolkit to, to have all that information centralized and easily accessible. And we're also putting together a video with testimonials from area business folks as to why Oregon City is a great place to do business. And that's something that we'll be putting on the website as well. I'll be taking it around to my client meetings and recruitment meetings. So. Train Depot. We are, we have refined the scope with the general contractor. We have a general contractor set of plans that we've submitted to building and planning. Planning is making us go through a minor site review. So, I've been working on that application and getting. Trying to meet that criteria. So, we're working on that. Hopefully, something, we'll be progressing on that soon. We're also working on an economic development mobile app for iPhones. This will be dedicated entirely to Oregon City businesses. So, we'll have a list of all the businesses in Oregon City. They'll be categorized under, you know, what, service, commercial, retail or industrial. And you'll be able to go in and click on a business and it'll bring up a map with a pinpoint on there and show other businesses that are in proximity to that business. It's just a couple of features that we're working on. But one of the cool things about this is if, you know, the business wants to get on this app and they have to be current with their business license.
Oh, I love it. Yeah.
That'll help us everything. But yeah, it's, it's a really good thing and I think the business community is getting excited about it. We put out a, a post on Facebook not too long ago. Got a lot of hits on that. So, there's more to come on that and we'll be doing, we'll be giving you a presentation on that once we get it set. We are in the process of organizing property owner meetings for the folks that own the industrial property out along Beaver Creek. Having charrettes or one-on-one meetings, whichever they prefer to discuss the benefits of developing their land for industrial use. We've got the state participating with us on that to communicate some success stories and just try to describe how it would all work and how it all benefit both the property owners and the city. Conducting, we're conducting site visits with the Chamber and the state. We're going around visiting different traded sector companies in the city, learning more about their company and their business and what some of their needs are. And then trying to match them up with available programs, match them up and educate them about available programs, both with the state, the region and locality. That's been very successful because some of these folks had no idea that some of these financing programs were available. And, you know, it's just, it's a win-win. And, you know, I'm still coordinating all the property interests. I get phone calls every day for the properties that the Urban Renewal Commission owns as well as the city. There have been some proposals, lots of questions. Nothing has really stuck yet, but we're still working on it. We've got one lead with the 12th and Main. So, we're still pursuing that. And I actually checked in with them today and they're, they're still moving forward. They're, they still have an interest, viable interest in that property. And then I'm still representing Oregon City regionally, as well as with the state, with, with the Greater Portland Inc., AURA now, which is the agency for, Agency of Oregon Redeve- Let's see, it is the, I forget the first A, but it's Oregon Redevelopment Agencies, Alliance of Oregon Redevelopment Agencies. That's it. So, that's, that's basically geared toward urban renewal and we're new members there. And also with Oregon Economic Development Association, we're working hard there too as well with best practices for economic development. And that's about it. Questions?
My question is you are using "we." Are you just, do you have a mouse in your?
I have. Michelle, Michelle is helping me. Michelle Benville is helping me.
It's basically you.
It's basically me. And.
That's a lot of work.
No, it's, it's me. But we're partnering with the county and the state to, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Good report.
Nice. Thank you.
What's going on?
A week ago last Friday, there was a festival down at the, into the Trail Interpretive Center. It was very successful. A lot of people attended. It was city-sponsored, but in conjunction with the Oregon California Trailers Association meeting that they have, I don't know, every year or is it?
Yes, their annual.
It's their annual meeting, but they do a lot of things when they're at a given location. It was a great event. What I wanted to specifically mention was that, I think, as most of the following know that we're considering actually building a new library space behind the existing one, not to be, have its architecture at all affected by it. And one of my concerns had been all the time, can we find a site like the Carnegie, oh, I should say like Library Park for the Concerts in the Park? And it was very nice to be able to go down there and see an event that was a relatively warm day. I was concerned about how hot, hot it would be. I think everybody there was comfortable. It had more people, I think, than the largest turnout we've had at the Carnegie. I've seen them up to 1,500, but I think there were more people at that particular event. And I can see, I couldn't, I couldn't visualize ahead of time how the Concerts in the Park might work. I think it's very clear to me that it can work. And through one of our grants that we mentioned earlier, the Metro Enhancement Grant that comes through the tipping fees at our garbage transfer station that we awarded money to Oregon City High School's construction class and they're going to be building a stage down there. And so, it gave me an opportunity to see how well that, that particular site's going to work. And it appears it's going to work in terms of parking and everything else. So, one of my concerns, I think, was alleviated somewhat by looking at that particular function down there. The first city festival occurred that Saturday downtown and it was the last event that Lloyd Purdy was involved in. It was his last day, I believe. And he was down there for a while, but we had a very good program, a great mixture of food vendors and art vendors there too. And some of the art people I was talking about indicated that, that mixture of food and art seemed to have benefited them. And so, that was, that was a great event, a big turnout for that event as well. So, we've had a couple of great city events that have occurred since we've, since we've had our last meeting.
And last night?
And then last night, of course, was, what was the last night? Yeah, National Night Out. I was busy, I was busy having too much fun to talk about. I mean, thinking about the, the regard. The National Night Out, this is an annual event. It gives a real, of course, you have a lot of vendors there and so forth, but it gives us a feel of the tremendous work that our public safety people do. They had a great demonstration on the use of the police dog there. The best, I've seen several of them. They've all been good, but this one, I think, was better than, longer lasting. But you could see how well that dog responds to that, finding evidence, but not mounting it, you know, looking up and looking at the evidence and looking up. So, they're not, they're not messing up the evidence in the process. And it, it was a good demonstration of that. We had our, our very popular local entertainer, Ray Gordon singing there. She's a great blues and the also singer. And she's getting some major national recognition for her, her work now. And so, she was down there. It was just a great event. And I think most of us were down there enjoying the festivities as well. And with that, who's next? Yes, go ahead. Rachel Smith.
I just want to say I enjoyed all three of those events as well. They were great. It was nice to see, it seemed like everyone from the city was at all of them and, and very well, well-attended. I wanted to say that CHP, I already said this, I think, at the last meeting, but CHP had their board meeting and we talked about the stage. And I think they were very much interested in seeing how concerts would work at the end of the Oregon Trail because as they reopen the museum down at the end of the Oregon Trail, definitely looking for ways to utilize that space in a, in a better way in the future and possibly even a way to bring in some income to the city or into the, to the museum itself. The Clackamas County Fair is next week. So, I'll probably see a lot of people there. I'll be serving corn dogs for the Optimus Club on Tuesday. Oh, I, oh my God. Prono pups. I'm going to get in trouble for that. I always do that. Sorry. Are you going to do, what day are you going to? Prono pups. They're better than corn dogs. And I'm always the one making them a hand-dipped. What, are you working?
I, I hadn't, I gotta work that out yet.
So, I'll be there on Tuesday. This is also going to be fun. I'm, I'm judging the Clackamas County Fair Talent Show, which is on the Saturday, the 17th, at the, at the fairgrounds. So, that should be fun as well. And I think that's it.
I forgot just one thing. I, I attended a presentation by a group called Alley Allies. And what they do is they're working with the city of Portland in reclaiming alleys that have become kind of derelict and run down. And so, they're doing several alleys in southeast Portland, working with the neighborhoods and seeing what the people want in these alleys and getting, you know, old abandoned cars out of them, making them walking spaces or picnic places and that kind of thing. And so, it was a really interesting program. And if anybody wants to look into that, I've got the information for it.
Yeah, we definitely should.
Anybody else?
Yes, me.
Commissioner Polly.
Thank you. There's been a lot going on in the city and there's been a lot going on in Main Street. So, I wanted to give, on Main Street with the organization. So, I wanted to give a little update. Lloyd Purdy gave his notice and he had his last couple of weeks. And in the meantime, the board, we got together, we've had lots of meetings lately, and we hired an interim manager, John Southgate. And he's going to, he's a private contractor. He's going to put in about 15 hours a week. And he has some great experience working with Main Street programs, some good experience in Hillsborough. And I think he'll bring a lot to the table. He is going to, and David Frazier has really helped us with this whole process. He attended one of our improv two kind of board meetings to try to figure out, you know, where to go from here and offered a lot of guidance to the board. So, it's been very helpful. So, John Southgate, he's going to focus his two months, it's going to be two months in the interim with the search process for hiring a new Main Street manager. And he's going to be the bridge from Lloyd to the successor. He is going to give a general assessment of the program with his experience and background. So, that'll be good to get some of his input and guidance. Staff management, there is one staff. Staff management, there is one staff person for Main Street. And EID preparation outreach, and I think this piece is very important. So we had another meeting today with some of the business owners down there, some of the ones that kind of stepped back and weren't being involved. And it was great to have their input, and I feel like they're coming back. And so now that we're doing this process, we really have an opportunity to kind of hit the reset button and be open for, just be very inclusive. That's a word that's been used a lot, so that's been good. And that's going to keep them pretty busy. So that's what's been going on. If you have any questions, you know, feel free to ask me. I want to make sure everybody's updated. But, but it's going really well. There's a lot of new board members recently, pretty new. And so this has been a new process for everybody, but it's going well.
Thank you. Commissioner Mum?
As the mayor said, I am the rep for the C4 meetings for this commission. And I wanted to thank the mayor for stepping in for me. I did have a family emergency that I had to deal with. And he was very gracious to step in and I will let him continue to carry that forward through the process. And thank John Lewis and his team for all their work they've done on that grant process. I just wanted to let everybody know, or this commission, know that Tuesday night is our work session. And I will be either extremely late or not here at all, depending upon how things go with my personal life there, with my daughter and all. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew with being on the C4, transportation funds are going to be fought over a lot. There's going to be a lot more opportunity and challenges. And we need to make sure, and I will stress this at C4 whenever we have a grant process, that, that the criteria has to be clear and it has to be followed. Because there's limited funds that are coming through from the federal and state government. And so there's going to be more issues with transportation funding. So that's my update.
Thank you. Coming back to a couple of things. I would like the, the City Manager Pro Tem to actually extend the congratulations to that, that Friday event that our Parks and Rec Department was very much involved in that successful event. I think they did a great job. One of the premier events that they've had. So please extend to Scott Archer our compliments on it. Did a great job. The other thing is, we've got the Willamette Falls Legacy Group is forming. This is a group that'll be making, made up of, among others, members of the, elected members of the partnership that is involved, which includes in the city of Oregon City, the metal regional government, Clackamas County, some representation from the state as well. And we have two, two people that will serve in that group. And I've asked Carol Polly, because of her involvement on the Main Street Board, the fact she has a business here, if she would be one of those. And I'm going to go ahead and point myself to be on that particular group. And we'll be going down to, on Monday, to talk to representatives of the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron. And I think it'll be our first formal effort as, as the elected officials in this process. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing them, meeting's adjourned.